Kindly on the mic. Check. Good afternoon everyone gathered here. Dear students, kindly pay attention for the following instructions. Dear parents and students, kindly pay attention for the following instructions. Do not clap after the prayer and Bible reading. Do not use mobile phones. Please switch off your mobiles before the program begins. Do not move around during the program and avoid any distractions. Do not leave the hall until the end of the program unless there is any emergency. Let us pay full attention to the message of the dignitaries. Do not talk among yourself during the speech or at any other time. To avoid confusion kindly follow the instruction given and cooperate with the volunteers near you. Thank you.
The students and the parents as well. What happens initially everybody wants to be in the hall. But as the program begins, as some of them receives the certificate, they start getting out, moving here and there and they start to exit and to go out. That is not allowed kindly make sure if somebody is in hurry to go you can go no one leave. Okay kindly do not take chance to move around get up in between and try to go out. Do not disturb the proceedings. Okay so kindly take note of that one. And also do not use your mobiles. Do not try to talk, do not receive the calls. So kindly switch off or put it in the silent mode.
Check.
Check. Check hello check check.
Check check. I kindly request everyone to rise as the dignitaries have arrived.
Thank you, you may kindly be seated. To begin this afternoon on an inspiring note let us recall the words of Dr. A.P.J. Abdul Kalam. If you want to shine like the sun first burn like the sun.
I am Muhammad Zayed Alam.
And I am Lubna from St. Aloysius Degree College. We will be your host for this event. This afternoon we are here to honor those shining stars whose dedication and excellence illuminate our institutions.
Let us now begin this session by invoking God's blessing. We now invite Sister Meba, student of St. Aloysius Degree College, to meditate on the word of God and lead us in the prayer.
Kindly stand. A reading from the Gospel according to St. Matthew. You are the salt of the earth but if salt has lost its taste how shall its saltiness be restored? It is no longer good for anything except to be thrown out and trampled under people's feet. You are the light of the world. A city set on a hill cannot be hidden. Nor do people light a lamb and put it under a basket. But on a stand and it gives light to all in the house. In the same way let your light shine before others so that they may see your good works and give glory to your Father who is in heaven. The word of the Lord.
Thanks be to God.
Almighty God, eternal Spirit of light and love. We come before you today with open hearts and humble minds. Fill this space with your divine presence and let your peace rest upon us. May every word spoken, every action taken today be guided by your wisdom and grace. Awaken in us a spirit of unity, compassion and higher purpose that through this gathering we may reflect the beauty of your truth and the strength of your light. Bless this event and may it serve as an instrument of harmony, inspiration and goodness for all who are here. We surrender our plans into your hands trusting that your light will illuminate our path. Amen.
Thank you Sister Meba. Kindly be seated. Thank you Sister Meba for your meaningful prayer. We now have an invocation dance by the students of St. Aloysius Degree College. Kindly refrain from clapping.
Thank you dear students for soulful performance. As we step into this afternoon of recognition and joy, we now move to the lighting of the lamp, a symbol of enlightenment, purity and knowledge. Light gives off itself freely, filling all available space. Light gives off itself freely, filling all available space, it never asks for anything in return. We invite our dignitaries to kindly light the lamp and mark the formal inauguration
Thank you dignitaries. A warm welcome sets the tone for a wonderful celebration. We now invite Reverend Father AM Raiappa to kindly welcome the gathering and introduce the ceremony.
Good afternoon and a warm welcome to one and all present here. Today we gather here for a very special and meaningful occasion, the meritorious students' award ceremony, a day dedicated to honoring our students who have excelled in their academic journey. This ceremony recognizes the outstanding achievements of our students in their 10 standard public exam. In the morning, we have the ceremony for the PUC students as well as for the graduates. And all these students have excelled not just in their studies, but also brought pride to their families, school, and to the entire Catholic community. This noble initiative was introduced by the former Archbishop with a vision to encourage and to motivate students to strive for academic excellence. As the saying goes, I quote, "Education is the most powerful weapon which you can use to change the world," unquote. In a world where genuine achievements often goes unnoticed, this celebration stands as a testimony to our commitment to recognize and to appreciate the hard work, perseverance, and the dedication of our young achievers. But this program is not only about recognizing excellence, it is also about inspiring vision. It is meant to identify students who aspire to pursue IAS studies and distinguished careers such as KAS, IAS, and other civil services, and to support them in their journey. Through ceremonies like this, many students have found the courage to dream bigger, work harder, and aim higher. As Bible reminds us, "Let your light shine before others, that they may see your good works and glorify your Father in heaven." Indeed, our meritorious students are those shining lights, illuminating not only their own paths, but also inspiring other fellow students. Over the years, this event has grown in strength and significance. Parents and students eagerly look forward to this celebration, for it represents hope, encouragement, and the fruit of perseverance. For the first time, we are proud to announce that we are honoring almost 800 plus students. It is a record number. While this year's overall results may have been challenging, as you all know, many schools, both in the PUC as well as in the 10 standard, the results are very poor. But still, the performance of our Catholic students have been truly exceptional. The number speaks louder than words. In previous years, we had around 350 to 450 students, but today we witness a tremendous growth. It is a clear sign that our students are moving in the right direction with faith, focus, and determination. As Saint John Bosco says, "Education is a matter of the heart." This ceremony reflects exactly that, a heartfelt appreciation of our students' achievements, the teachers' dedication, and their parents' constant support. Although this event is organized by the Archdiocese and Board of Education (ABE), it extends beyond our institutions. The awardees today come not only from the AB schools, but also from other institutions, making this a true celebration of Catholic excellence across the Archdiocese. In recognizing these students, we are not just celebrating marks, we are celebrating faith, discipline, effort, and hope. For excellence is not a destination, but it is a way of life. On this joyful day, let us applaud our young achievers and pray that they continue to grow in wisdom, knowledge, and grace, becoming shining examples of Christian virtues and academic brilliance. Today, as we are having this celebration, there are few dignitaries who are here and I like to welcome them and also felicitate them. We have in our midst, Right Reverend Dr. Joseph Susay Naden, who ails from KGF. He completed his education at Saint Mary's KGF, Saint Philomenas Maysu, Trichinapalli, and Saint Peter's Seminary Bengaluru. Wherever he has served, he has brought transformation through his faith, dedication, and commitment to the mission of Christ. A true devotee of Mother Mary and a man of principles, he stands as a shining example of humility, discipline, and compassion. A singer, hariter, and organizer, he is a bishop who blends discipline with humor, inspiring both the young and the old through his warmth and wisdom. As scripture reminds us, I quote, "Whatever you do, work at it with all your heart, as working for the Lord, not for men," unquote. His lordship has truly lived this verse, giving his best in every ministry entrusted to him. He has served the Archdiocese as assistant, parish priest, parish priest, manager and correspondent of the school, and as secretary of the YCS and YSM, breathing new life and enthusiasm into these movements during his tenure. Your lordship, your deep Marian devotion has also strengthened the faith of the Archdiocese and community through the widespread promotion of our Lady of Fatima's devotion. At present, he serves as the auxiliary bishop of Bengaluru, rector of Saint Mary's Basilica, vice president of BMSs, and is interested with several important commissions. His dynamism, love for sports, and ability to adapt time, place, and situation makes him a true leader who connects faith with life. As Dr. APJ Abdul Kalam said, "Excellence is a continuous process, not as an accident." His lordship's life and service beautifully reflects this truth. A continuous journey of excellence, dedication, and faith truly is a precious pearl of the Archdiocese of Bengaluru, whose radiance inspires all who come in touch with him. On behalf of the Archbishop, Most Reverend Dr. Peter Machado, the president of the Archdiocese and Board of Education, the auxiliary bishop, the vice president, the secretary and treasurer, Monsignor S. Jayanathan, and all the managers and the faculty, the parents and the students present here, I welcome him wholeheartedly for this August gathering. I welcome his lordship to come on the stage. I request Monsignor S. Jayanathan to honor and felicitate him.
My dear friends, before we honor His Excellency, Most Reverend Dr. Joseph Susay Naden, in continuation of what Reverend Father Raiappa said, he is the joint secretary as well. This morning, we had awarding ceremony for PU, degree, and PG students. PU students, 380, degree students, 99, and postgraduate students, 13 this morning. Archbishop was there and auxiliary bishop also. His Grace, the Archbishop will also come around 4 o'clock and to continue the awarding ceremony. His Excellency has got another program in Jallalani, so he will be going away shortly after giving the message and part of the awarding ceremony. And this year, as Reverend Father Raiappa said, we are also honoring the teachers who have given good performance, qualitative results, and we honored this morning 10 teachers. And now in the afternoon, 11 teachers will be honored. And you see, four shields and two trophies. They are complaining to me, for morning you made us to stand. All are seated, now His Grace will come, then he will give away four institutions that obtain 10%, three ICC, one state board, and rolling trophy also will be given to one ICC and one state board. And Father Raiappa will announce little later. So my dear friends, without machado, we are indeed honored to have in our midst our auxiliary bishop and educationalist, Most Reverend Dr. Joseph Susay Naden. On behalf of all of us, very especially ABE, Your Excellency, we are privileged to have you and also thank you in anticipation for your presence and for your message.
Request Father Mahendra also to come forward to honor Bishop. We also extend a warm welcome to Monsignor S. Jayanathan, a secretary and treasurer of ABE. Monsignor has been the architect behind many of the transformative initiatives that have shaped our institutions. His tireless dedication, often working from dawn to dusk, reflects his deep commitment to improving every aspect of our schools and to ensuring that the vision of the Archbishop is brought to life in action. Whatever your hands finds to do, do it with all your mind. Ecclesiastic 9:10 says, "Monsignor truly embodies the spirit of wholehearted service. His meticulous planning, administrative wisdom, and foresighted vision has strengthened the very foundation of our education mission." John C. Maxwell once said, I quote, "Leader is not only the one who knows the way, he goes the way and shows the way," unquote. Monsignor, through your guidance, persistence, and personal example, you have shown us how faith and hard work can build strong institutions and inspire excellence in both staff and students. Rabidranath Tago said, I quote, "The highest education is that which does not merely gives us information, but makes our life in harmony with all existence," unquote. Your work, Monsignor, reflects this ideal, harmonizing vision, discipline, and compassion in the service of our schools and community. On behalf of His Grace and also auxiliary bishops, the managers, the staff, the parents, and the students gathered here, I extend to you, Monsignor, a heartfelt gratitude and a warm and respectful welcome. Welcome dear Monsignor. I take this opportunity to warmly welcome the managers and the heads of the AB institutions who are gathered here. They are the backbone of our organization, serving as a vital bridge between ABE and the institution they deal. Today, they are here to witness the success of their students and staff and to receive the awards of championship. It is indeed a great pleasure to have them with us. On behalf of the dignitaries and everyone present here, I extend heartfelt welcome to each and every one of them. Welcome dear fathers and welcome dear teachers. This program would be incomplete without the presence of the meritorious students, the true stars of the day, and today belongs to each and every one of you who are gathered here that is on the right hand side. It is a day set apart to recognize your achievements, to celebrate your perseverance, and to appreciate the hard work that has brought you this far. By doing things wholeheartedly, especially by studying well, you have made your parents, teachers, and the institution proud. Each one of you is the pillar of the Catholic Church. The Church looks to you to continue the ministry of Divine Guru Jesus, not only within the church walls, but in your own places, in your profession, and in your daily lives. As Saint Teresa of Calcutta once said, quote, "God does not require us to succeed, he only requires that you try," unquote. Your success today is the result of that sincere effort of trying, believing, and persevering with faith. I quote, "Excellence is never an accident, it is the result of eye intention, sincere effort, and intelligent execution," unquote. Indeed, your achievements are the fruits of your intention to do well, your tireless effort, and your strong will to grow. On behalf of the president, vice president, and auxiliary bishop, the staff and the faculty present here, and your parents, I welcome wholeheartedly each and every one of you for this program. Heart-y welcome to you, dear students. Today, we are truly delighted to welcome the parents who are here to witness and to celebrate the achievements of the children. Your presence adds beauty and meaning to this day of joy and pride. Behind every child's success stands the silent strength, sacrifice, and support of a parent. What our students have accomplished today is not by their effort alone, but also by the constant guidance, encouragement, and prayer of their parent that is each and every one of you. As Bible reminds us, "Train up a child in the right way he should go. Even when he is old, he will not depart from it," Proverbs 22:6. You dear parents have lived this wisdom, nurturing your children with love, discipline, and faith. Your dedication has been the foundation upon which their dreams have been built. The great educator Maria Montesari once said, I quote, "Through your care and effort, you have given your children both the groundings of value and the courage to soar high." Today is a day of joy and happiness for you. As your beloved sons and daughters receive awards and blessings from our spiritual leaders, this recognition is as much yours as it is theirs. On behalf of His Grace, the Archbishop, auxiliary bishop, and all the dignitaries present here, I welcome wholeheartedly for this celebration. Welcome dear parents. I take this opportunity to extend a very warm welcome to all the staff members of the Archdiocese and Board of Education (ABE) who works tirelessly for the welfare and the progress of our institution. While many others enjoy government-declared holidays and breaks, IAB staff often continue to work without pause, a clear reflection of their dedication, discipline, and love for the mission entrusted them. Outwardly, it may seem that they enjoy their work, and indeed they do, but that joy is rooted in sacrifice and service. Yes dear friends, your hard work and perseverance even in the midst of challenges have made today's celebration possible. It is your effort in collaboration with our secretary Monsignor S. Jayanathan and the staff of Saint Alashia's Degree College that has brought this day to life. Indeed, your commitment is the visible expression of love for your occasion and for the growth of our students and institution. I welcome each and every one of you for this celebration as well. I also extend a special word of welcome to Reverend Father Anthony Mahindran, the manager and correspondent of this institution. Father, we are truly and deeply grateful for your kindness, generosity, and for accommodating us so graciously. Your efforts along with those of your principal, staff, and the volunteers have ensured that every arrangement for this celebration is done with care and perfection. On behalf of His Grace, Archbishop, and also auxiliary bishops, the secretary, and all the staffs gathered here, I extend a heartfelt and grateful welcome to you, dear Father, to the principal, to the staff, and all the volunteers gathered here. Welcome each and every one of you. May God bless all of you abundantly for your dedication, teamwork, and spirit of service. Once again, I welcome each and every one of you for this celebration. Have a blessed celebration and also God bless each and every one of you.
Thank you Father. Leadership is the capacity to translate vision into reality. We now have the privilege of hearing from Right Reverend Dr. Joseph Susay Naden, auxiliary bishop of Bangalore and Vice President, BMSs. We warmly invite him to address the gathering.
Jayanathan, the Vice President and the Secretary of Archdiocese Board of Education, Reverend Father Raiappa, the Joint Secretary. Reverend Father Raiappa, the Joint Secretary, Father Mahendran, the Manager of Saint Aloysius Institutions, dear Principal, the Staff, the Faculty and dear Students and dear proud Parents. I am really very glad to be here this afternoon. As we all know, that knowledge is power. Archdiocese indeed is so happy to see that more than eight hundred of all Catholic students have grown in knowledge, grown in power of thinking, which is most essential and important to persevere much more and achieve greater things in life. Dear parents and dear students, as it is given here, a short message. Indeed, my message is going to be really very short. Today, I have the joy of presenting the Student Excellence Award. This award honors a student who has demonstrated exceptional academic performance. You, my dear friends, congratulations to your hard work, determination and achievements. Your success is an inspiration to others. This award is not just a recognition of your academic success, but also a symbol of your discipline and commitment. Today, we also celebrate the unwavering support of your parents and the guidance of your teachers, who have been instrumental in shaping your future. My dear friends, I am indeed really very happy to celebrate your success, to celebrate the joy of receiving this award. I wish that you come to adore this auditorium, to receive many more, to take part in many more meritorious celebration ceremonies. May you come again, that you may receive many more awards. As it was said, "You are called to be the light of the world. You are to shine, you are to shine bright and beautiful for God and for everyone around." Wishing all a very pleasant evening as well as wishing all much more success in your future academic involvement and study. Would like to just give one appeal. Our institution here at Saint Aloysius, I have been seeing this place for the past thirty-five years. I have seen it has grown and it has really grown to be very well established. We have all the facilities here in our college, in this campus. I wish that you may opt to come and study here and bring laurels to this our institution. Once again, congratulations to you and may you be the achievers in future and perform much greater and come to receive many more awards. God bless you.
Thank you, Bishop, for your inspiring message. Education is the most powerful weapon which you can use to change the world. We now invite our respected Principal, Dr. Sandhya Panikar of Saint Aloysius Degree College to share her thoughts.
Good afternoon, everyone. It gives me immense pleasure to welcome you all to this meaningful and joyous occasion, a celebration of academic excellence and the people who make it possible. Respected dignitaries, esteemed managers and principals of various institutions, faculty members, dear students and proud parents. Your presence here adds grace and significance to this event. I welcome you all. We are privileged to have with us today a true pillar of our educational mission, His Grace, Most Reverend Dr. Peter Machado, Archbishop of Bangalore and President of the Archdiocese and Board of Education. I welcome your grace in absentia. We are thankful for his steadfast commitment to providing education to the marginalized, especially the students from the northeast state like Manipur, who have been given a renewed sense of purpose through your initiative. Over eighty students benefit each year from free quality education under your leadership. You remind us that education is not just a system, but a powerful tool for transformation. I extend a sincere welcome to Right Reverend Dr. Joseph Susay Nadan, Auxiliary Bishop of Bangalore and Vice President of BMSSS. Thank you for your consistent encouragement and your unwavering support of our academic mission. A sincere welcome also goes to our Monsignor S. Jainadan, Secretary of ABE, whose expertise and administrative foresight are key to our continued excellence. Father, your dedication and discipline are deeply appreciated. To Reverend Father M. Raiappa, Joint Secretary of ABE, we offer our thanks and welcome. Your support, insight and steady presence have been invaluable across all our institutions. And of course, our heartfelt thanks to Reverend Father Anthony Mahendranji, Manager and Correspondent of Saint Aloysius Educational Institutions, who has overseen every aspect of this event with diligence and grace. We are truly grateful for your leadership. I also take this opportunity to welcome Dr. Sister Jansi, PU Principal, Saint Aloysius PU College. We thank you, Sister, for gracing this occasion. Today, we post to celebrate the academic achievements of our bright students and to honor the mentorship of our exceptional teachers. To the meritorious students who are receiving awards, hearty congratulations. Your achievements speak volumes. Your ability to remain focused, driven and hardworking is admirable. You represent the promise of a better tomorrow. To the teachers, this success is yours too. Your belief in your students, your ability to push them beyond limits and your unwavering support has enabled them to cross the threshold of excellence. Thank you. I would now like to brief you all about the history of Saint Aloysius Educational Institution. This institution founded in eighteen ninety-eight by MEP Fathers at Saint Francis Xavier's Cathedral Campus. This was the first school of Archdiocese of Bangalore. In nineteen forty-one, the school was extended to high school by acquiring a land at Cox Town by Reverend Father Brown. And in nineteen seventy-three, the PUC building was built and later in two thousand seven, the Present Degree and PG College was built by Emeritus Archbishop Bernard Morais. This institution has stood tall as a beacon of learning, molding minds and shaping futures, guided by its core values of integrity, discipline and compassion. Here at Saint Aloysius Campus, Bangalore, we offer a comprehensive and value-based education across multiple levels. Our campus houses high school, grades eight, nine, ten, a pre-university college offering science, commerce and arts streams and a degree college that includes undergraduate, postgraduate and research programs. Beyond academics, we place a strong emphasis on holistic development. Our students actively engage in various extracurricular and co-curricular activities through units like NCC.
I would also like to highlight that this year, one of our students, Sister Rita Deepak, she was awarded the, awarded the highest, secured first rank from the North University, Bangalore for highest percentage in the field of social work. To all the awardees, both students and teachers, congratulations once again. May God bless.
Thank you, ma'am. Dear parents and students, kindly note the following instructions. Please do not get distracted while the names are being called. Follow the instructions of the volunteers and stand in the line according to your row. Do not make noise as it will disturb others. After receiving your certificates, kindly return to your respective place through the center aisle. Do not leave the hall during the program as it will obstruct the proceedings. If your name is not called out, please remain seated in your place. If you receive the wrong certificate or if there is any mistake, kindly hand it over to the concerned person in the room on the right side of the hall as you exit. The issue will be sorted there. Please ensure that your movement is quite quick, orderly as we have many meritorious students to be awarded. Refrain from clapping while the certificates are being distributed as it may disturb the announcement of the names. Do not use mobile phones, keep them switched off and do not ask others to take photos. We have an official photographer for the event.
Success is not just about reaching the top, but lifting others as you rise. Now, the moment of pride and joy for every student, teacher and parent. For the felicitation ceremony, we now invite Right Reverend Dr. Joseph Susay Nadan, Auxiliary Bishop, to do the honors. Let's applaud our young achievers as they receive recognition for their hard work and excellence. Now, we call upon the faculty representative to read out the name of the awardees.
Dear friends, from the year two thousand nine, the Archdiocese Board of Education has been recognizing and awarding the students those who secured eighty-plus percentage. For the first time, under the guidance and also initiative of Monsignor S. Jainadan, from this year, it has been decided to appreciate and also award the teachers and also the lecturers who have given hundred percent result in their respective subjects, qualitative result, quantitative result and also when it comes to quality, who have given eighty-plus percentage. And in the morning, we did honor the college lecturers and during this time, we like to honor and award and to appreciate the school teachers. Now, I call out the name of the teachers. Kindly come forward as I call out the names and kindly receive the award from the bishop. Mrs. Anis KJ from the Assamshan School, Assamshan High School, Rajaji Nagar for the subject, Social Science. Kindly come forward, the teachers and the students kindly be quick. Okay, next, Mrs. Bharati from Lurz Public School, Ramanagara for Hindi subject. Followed by Ms. Bhavana from Christ King Public School, Malleswaram for Physical Education subject. Followed by Mrs. Farathanisa Ansari from Saint German School for Computer Application. Next, Mrs. Lysix Thomas from Assamshan School, Rajaji Nagar for Second Language, English. Next, Mrs. Lopa Mudra from Christ King Public School, Malleswaram for English. Followed by Mrs. Mary Ullas Divya from Assamshan School, Rajaji Nagar for First Language, English. Mrs. Subhadra Yem from Saint German High School for Physical Education. Followed by Mrs. Padmavati Naik, Christ King Public School in Hindi subject. Followed by Mr. Vinayek Egde, Christ King Public School in Kannada subject. Dear students, kindly note, this will be followed by the students' awards. As the names are called out, kindly get up, okay? Kindly get up and come to the right hand side and stand in line, okay? Kindly follow as the name has been called out. Kindly follow the instructions.
Peter Dominic Cherukara. Honoria Alexandra De Souza. Anaya Anila Mathew. Adil Joseph KJ. Adil Joseph KJ. Alvin Frederick. Angelina Ria. Anamol Sani Anthony. Anusha R. Arpita Jaisel AS. Ashmita. Ashwini KS. Asin Maria De Souza. Anaida Goncalves. Ananya Infina. Anaya Karmal Dennis. Aaron Ernest Ellis. Aaron Joshua Datta Roy. Adith Phillips. Ajay Steven. Ajay Steven A. Akash Jokum J. Akshay Joshua Yen. Alvin Joy Lee. Alan Rose. Alicia Ann Joshi. Alicia Thomas. Alan Pinto. Alfonso Alexina Anturaj. Alvin. Alvin Neve Fernandez. Alvin Josh. Amanda Maria Mota. Amrutha R. Ananya Alashias A. Andrea Maria V. Angel Anit Tita. Angel Jessica Mary. Angelina P. Anish Pritham. Anjali P. Anne Mary Patrick. Anna Marlin A. Anit Infantsia. Anis De Souza. Anlin Fernandez. Anto Jason J. Anto Simon Yum. Arlin Sarah De Souza. Arokyar Rohit. Arsh Topno. Arul Priya P. Arul Raj Felix C. Ashel Theresa Rodriguez. Ashita Mari Menaces. Ashley Jean Rodriguez. Ashlyn Fiona Sararo. Ashrita Yum. Ashrina J. Austin Abhishek S. Austin Thompson. Avila Shvetah F. Anush Kiran B. Ben Joyl Sebastian. Yes Bertila Princey. Benita Blazin. Bliss Brinda A. Brandon Nicholas Clements. Braden Chandrasekhar B. Brendan William Bowler. Yel Bhumika Christina. Jay Beula Benny. Carol Patricia. Caitlin A. Jay Selin Janis. Charis E. Joseph. Cheryl Dahilia. Chetin Samuel J. Chris Daniel Cutino. Chris Fernandez. Sloan Fattado. Clifford Samuel. Clorinda Monica. Joyce Lopez. Cassandra DiMello.
Yeah, Danica. Dixit Reddy KP. Deepika Aye. AJ Deepika. Delvert Leo Gabrielle R. Dionne Lenwin Pereira. Desha D. De Souza. Divya Lenora Y. Dia Maria. Dona Angelina A. IP Daniel Victory. C. Manuel Anthony. E. Joseph. Jay Helena DeFroza. Elvin Suellmane. Emma Bonson Mampelli. Evelyn Mary. Evelyn S. Maria. Ezekiel U. Felsey G. Fiona Jane De Souza. Florence Virage. Florence Esraaj. Jay Francina Mary. Gagan Dixit. Dixit S. Glennie Marcia Picardo. Godfrey. Godfrey Javanraj. Gaurav KS. Gracey P. Andrea Juana. Ansel Chaurappa Vijay. Ashita Anne Stanley. AC. Ebsheba. Emmanuel Glaren. Emmanuel Ivan. Infant Daphne I. Jay Infant Joshua. Ivan Moses. Jaden Joseph. Jay Jackson. Janak Mahanti. Jaden Pilip Fernandez. Jane Francis S. Jay Jafrasberry. Jeffrey Snow Sanjay. Janesa Jobi. Janika Priya J. Janita Rego. Jharushariya J. Jesslyn Marciwi. Students go back and stand in the line, do not get inside in between. Jessie Mackenzie S. Jessica Anne Feife. Juana J. Jocelyn Augustine. Joyl Ankitraaj. Joyet Saju. Dear students, by chance, if any one of you have received wrong certificate, if there is mistake in your certificates, do not worry, kindly be seated. At the end, as you exit, there is a help desk on the right hand side of the hall. You can just submit your certificates and get it exchanged. Do not get distracted now. To avoid the confusion when the names are called out, kindly come in line so that you will get the right certificate. Juana Benil. John Benil. Joshua Money. Joshua Samuel Francis. Joshua Vijay Thomas. Jocelyn Korea. Jobin Bobby. Joy Justin. Jason Salu. Julian Rachel J. Justin Gilbert J. Julia Jordan. Attaid. Karen Doris J. V. Karishini. Katharine Dinto. Katrina Pinto. Keegan Emmanuel Lobo. Kendrick Alapat. Kesia Susan V. Kinet Robin O. F. Kripa Ishwarya. Latitia Radhalees. Lauren Pinto. Leanna. Leanna Gilbert. Eliander Ivan. Lena Mercy A. Emmanuel Brett Liu. Lemuel Brett Liu. Lenora Shasha De Souza. Leo Shaila K. Leon Augustine Charangat. Leon George. Lesine, Lesine Iren. Letitia Selin Sebastian. Lydia Lawanya K. Liket John. Lisa Maria Joseph. Lisa Angelina Mary L. Livia Lobo. Maria Daniel J. Maria Anisha H. Maria Pratiksha J. Maria Sinchana. Maria Vincey. Marisha Lydia A. Marisha. Marshall Nicholas M. Mary Kamila M. Mary Jennifer A. Mary Matilda D. Mary Pratiksha KP. Mary Sheba JC. Mary Spandana C. Mary Swapna D. K. Matthew. Mika Rose. V. M. Meghana. B. Melvin Joy. P. Melvin Anthony. Melvin Anthony B. Mercy Victoria. E. Marlin Ra- Raquel. Marlin Preetah Saldana. Michael Satya Mota. Michelle C. Michelle S. C. Mirella Jain John. Monisha Montero. Nancy Maria S. Naveen Nanathil Joseph. Nayana Sidjo. Neerose Dissoza. Neil Natalio. Neil Sebastian Nathan. Nixon Joel Ian. Nikki R. Nicole Sarah Pinto. Niket DiMello. Nitin Yum. C. Nitin Joe's. Noel Anto. Noel Jacob. Noel Justice Mary. Olivia Prabhu. Paul Joshua. Paulan Trisha A. Petrina Naveen. Prajay U. Princey Roy V. Priyala Shristi Y. Rachel Clarissa Fernandez. Rachel Georgia Rodriguez. Rafael J. Raymond Louis De Silva. Rena Janet F. Rena D. Reginald A. Remiel Jake Miranda. Riven, Riven Sekura. Ria Ashita S. Rickson Joe Yum. Rion Andrade. Rishita B. Sorry, it's Rishita P. Ria Ashish. Rian Marsh D. Almeida. Dear parents and students, kindly pay attention. I request dear parents and students remain for some more time here. So because the others are receiving this award, it's just embarrassing when you're going out. I request some of you just remain for another thirty minutes kindly. Be seated in your places after receiving your award. Thank you. Fiona Dempsey Stephen. Roger Placid Arena. Rohan Anthony Diaz. Romita Mary R. Rose Yum. Rosemary Sebastian. Rosemary Sutita E. Rosie S. Y. Ruben Leo. Rufus Ashish Richard. Sahitha A. Kumar. Sahana Yum. Sam Dixit J. Samantha Swedel Miranda. Samraj A. Samskriti Ashok. Samson Paul. Samuel J. H. Sandra Magdalene. Sanjana Maria Girish. Sanju D. Santino Rocchio Shine. Sara Annie Samuel. Sara Mary Joseph. Sarvajit V. Sebastian Surya K. Shalini D. Charlotte Lindsay A. Shalom Rose Jesuk. Sean Aaron Fernandez. Sean Salvarej. Sheba, Sheba Nikita Yum. N. Sharwin. The student though so come late, remain there, your name will be called at the end. Parents understood and there is no need to fight with the volunteers there. You are expected to be here by two thirty. It is your mistake if you have come late, so after having come late, do not fight with the volunteers. So kindly remain quietly, your names will be once again repeated at the event. Madam kindly go back, your name will be called, when it is called out kindly come. Kindly follow the instructions.
In the beginning it is told and now once again I am telling. If your names are not called out kindly be seated in your respective places. And some of you if you have come late, you can wait for some more time, there are still the names are there to be called out. So once that is done, the name those who came late their names will be called out once again at the end. So kindly be patient. Now I request Monsignor to come forward to propose the vote of thanks and to address the gathering.
Your Excellency Most Reverend Dr. Joseph Susayenadin, Reverend Father Mahindran, the manager correspondent, Mrs. Sandhya Paniker, the principal, Sir Janse, Principal of the BU College, Reverend Fathers, and my dear friends. We are very grateful to His Excellency Bishop Joseph Susayenadin. Morning he had one program at Paranabhavana, another program at Ramurthi Nagar. Now he came to Cockstown and from Cockstown is going to Jalali and from Jalali do not know where he is going to go. So Excellency, on behalf of the ABE, on behalf of His Grace, the Archbishop Most Reverend Dr. Peter Machado and Auxiliary Bishop of His Excellency Bishop Satish and Reverend Father Ayappa, on behalf of the Fathers present here, I thank you wholeheartedly for your presence with us and also for your erudite and also thought-provoking message. And students will definitely they will carry forward the message that you have given. And I know that you are in hurry to go, then I request a father to accompany the bishop to see him of Reverend Mahindran. And Archbishop will arrive at a moment and please be patient, please. Let us please stand, let us give a round of applause to the bishop. Kindly be seated. My dear students, parents also. First of all, we are proud of you. As your parents are proud of you, we are really proud of you. I shared this incident with the students. Once the teachers took the students outside the school building and the teacher showed the few children, what do you see? And one boy said, "Miss, I see the tall building." The other one said, "I see a tree." The other one noticed a parrot on the tree and that student said, "Miss, I see a parrot on the tree." The other one said, "I see a bird flying." The one boy was just standing, he was just staring at the sky. And the teacher asked this student, "Why are you silent? What are you seeing? What do you see?" Do you know, that student said, "My friends saw a building, one saw a tree, one saw a parrot sitting on the tree, another friend of mine saw the bird flying. I saw everything, but I am focusing on the sky. I am focusing on the sky." It is said, "If you aim at the moon, even if you miss the moon, you are sure to fall among the stars." Aim at the moon, even if you are standing with the... Just hold on a second because Archbishop's secretary I think is calling. Yes, they are reaching any point of time, yes. Everything programmed. So it said if you aim at the moon, my dear friends, if you miss, you fall among the stars. I want each one of you on behalf of the ABE, each one should become a star. What is the star? How to become a star? S stands for have a singular dream in your life. I am one of the fans of Dr. E.P. Abdul Kalam. I read all his books and his sayings as well. And he says, "Have a dream in your life. Have a dream in your life, not while sleeping that dream. When you are awake, have the dream in your life." Second, acquire knowledge. Today, knowledge is power. That's what other speakers also said, knowledge is power. Acquire knowledge, today very important. Today more here I mentioned learning, data technology, robotics. Sometime my dear parents also remember. Recently someone came and said, "I want to become a doctor." Parents, they try to discourage the child. Do you know my dear friends, another twenty years, the doctors' requirement may not be that high as on day today. Do you know they are going to start a medical college? Do you know for whom they are going to start a medical college? Do you know for whom they are going to start a medical college? They are going to start a medical college for the robotics. Robotics, they are going to start a medical college for the robotics. And they say robotics, you can trust them because of three reasons. One is of course what you feed, but they say as far as possible, error free. Second, they are faster. Third, they can cross the boundaries, the distance. Recently on WhatsApp, they sent a video clipping. The doctor said he was in Hyderabad or so. One hundred, eight hundred, one thousand eight hundred kilometers far away, the operation was conducted and the doctor maneuvering here is computer, the robotics, they were conducting the operation. Therefore, have a singular dream in your life. Very important. If you don't have a dream, yes. You know, once the teacher asks the students in the class, "What do you want to become? What do you want to become?" One got up and said, "I want to become a scientist." Another one said, "I want to become a cop." Another one said, "I want to become a teacher." Another one said, "I want to become a truck driver." Then this boy Tom was seated. The teacher asked, "Tom, what do you want to become?" Tom got up and said, "Teacher, I am thinking of becoming a doctor like my daddy. I am thinking of becoming a doctor like my daddy." Then the teacher asked, "Is your daddy a doctor?" He said, "No, you two was thinking of becoming a doctor." Thinking, no. Stop wishing, start fishing. T stands for try. Even if you fail, try. Singular dream in your life, object in your life, vision in your life. Try till you succeed, very important. Vision, reorient your efforts, then definitely acquire. Reorient all the time, think differently. You know Hollywood mantra, four mantras, Hollywood mantras. Think differently, think differently Hollywood mantra. And the next is simplify. Simplify, whatever you do, simplify. Next one is you have to be creative in your life, that is called a reorient only you create. And the last one is think positively, very important. Negative, no, think positively, very important. If you are negative, you cannot. Avoid three things from your life, my dear students. One is no negative attitude in your life, no negative attitude. If you want to this, don't ever say, "I am useless." You are special, you are unique in the eyes of God. Every day you say, "I am special. I am special, I will make things happen." Things won't happen, but you make things happen. No negative attitude at all. Second one is no mental blocks, don't give excuses. Let us say it is raining, your mommy and daddy says, "Go to the market and buy." "Oh, it is raining, I cannot go." Then mommy and daddy say, "There is an umbrella, why can't you take it?" "Oh, I can take the umbrella, but it has got too many holes." Mental blocks. Why can't you go? "Oh, shop is very far." No, there are two types of people in the world. Some people, my dear friends, you remember that. Some people give excuses and reasons why they cannot do things, they are right. Another category of people, they find ways and means to make things happen. Things won't happen, but you make things happen, very important. Therefore, don't give up. First is no negative attitude. Second is remove the mental blocks, move forward. And last, third one is, my dear students, my dear friends, last one is no blame game. Don't blame your parents, don't blame others, you make efforts, okay? Do you remember? Did we remember star? Yes. Singular vision. T, try again, don't lose your heart, try again. A, ask for assistance from your teachers, from others. R, reorient your life. Reinvent the wheel, then you move forward, okay? So now please stand, let us welcome our dearest Archbishop, Most Reverend Dr. Peter Machado, and he is here. Give a round of applause, my dear friends.
Dear friends, it is indeed a moment of great joy and pride to welcome His Grace, Most Reverend Dr. Peter Machado, the Archbishop of Bengaluru and President of ABE to this meritorious Students Award Ceremony. Your Grace, we are deeply honored by your gracious presence among us today. You are truly a missionary and visionary, a shepherd and orator, a man of justice and principle and one who is always conscious of duty. You are simple and humble, yet meticulous in planning. A good listener and a wise counselor. A powerful preacher and an inspiring teacher. You are a true educationist who goes out to both students and teacher. Under your leadership, our archdiocese and schools have witnessed remarkable initiatives. From generous salary hike for staff and opportunities for seminars and sports to recognizing the efforts of the teachers through awards and appreciation. For students, you have introduced additional classes, co-curricular programs and continued the meritorious Students Award Program which motivates them to strive for excellence. Your Grace, you are a man of prayer, drawing constant inspiration from the divine guru to lead, guide and carry forward your sacred ministry. Bible reminds us, "Let your light shine before others that they may see your good works and glorify your Father in heaven." Matthew 5:16. Truly, Your Grace, Your light shines through your tireless service to God's people in the archdiocese, in our schools and among the poor and needy. Despite your busy schedule filled with numerous meetings, not only at the Archdiocese House but across the city, state, country and abroad, you always make it a point to be present at important events like this. This gesture reflects your deep love for our students, teacher and for the entire human family. As the John Dewey once said, quote, "Education is not preparation for life. Education is life itself," unquote. Your Grace, through your vision and encouragement, you help our institution truly live the spirit of education. On behalf of the Vice President, Right Reverend Dr. Arakirat Satish Kumar and Right Reverend Dr. Joseph Susayenadin, Secretary Monsri S. Jayanadin and all the staff present here and the manager and correspondent of this institution, Father Anthony Mahindran, the principal, staff and student, the parents and all the students gathered here, I extend a hearty and respectful welcome to Your Grace to this celebration. May your presence and words today continue to inspire us all to work with great dedication and faith in shaping young minds for a brighter future. Your Grace, I welcome you to come on the dais and I request Monsignor and Father Prakash to come forward to felicitate His Grace.
Dear friends, after honoring the Archbishop, Archbishop will address us, then few more certificates he will give. Then at the end, His Grace will award the rolling shield. That is we have around the shields that are given to four institutions that acquire 10% result and also the rolling trophy to one ICC school and one AB school. Your Grace, we are indeed privileged to have you in our midst. Morning His Grace was there and he was really tired. So he awarded nearly 381 students and a few teachers and after the event for another function there, meeting. Then afternoon, Anavi is come here. We appreciate Your Grace for your presence here, not only that. My dear friends, dear students and parents, please remember, ABE is moving forward, marching ahead. Now we are awarding 10% result for the school. Last year it was 400, 10% is now 800 this year. So next year also we improve our performance and many will definitely...
Vinu Daniel S. Vivian Bosco P. Vivian V. Juwan Fabian. Zeyus Enok Starson. Zo Alexander Lakra. The students, if any one of you came late, if you have come late and if you have not come forward, kindly pay attention as I call out the names and if you are here, come forward to receive the certificate. Anita Infenta. Austin Abhishek S. Alvin A.C. Ananya Aloshia. Angel Jessica Mary. Anne Mary Patrick. Amanda Maria Mota. Anto Simon Y. B. Anushkiran. Benita Blazin. Ben Joel Sebastian. Beulah Boni. Donna Angelina A. Dishadi Dissoza. Gagan Dikshit Yes. Gaurav K.S. F. Sheba. Jeffrey Snow Sanjay. Joslin Augustine. Joshua Samuel Francis. Joshua Vijay Thomas. Jobin Bobby. Justin Gilbert J. Catherine Dinto. Keegan Emmanuel Lobo. Kendrick Alapat. Lenora Sasha Dissoza. Letita Rachel. Nancy Maria Yes. N. Sharwin. Shreyas J. Apart from this, if somebody is here, if you have not got the certificate, kindly meet the ABE representative after the program.
Mary Pratiksha. Mary Swapna. Monisha Montero. Neil Natalio. Neroz Dissoza. Petrina Navin. Rachel Georgia Rodriguez. Rafael J. Ria Ashita Yes. Rickson Jos Yum. Rihanna Dancy Stephen. Roger Placid Arhana. Sahana Yum. Sara Mary T. Joseph. Sara Ann Samuel. Samson Paul. Santino Rokio Shine. Santino Rokio Shine.
My dear friends, now His Grace, the Archbishop will address, share his concerns, and above all, is highly a motive, great, greatest motivator. And he loves children and encourages the children to study well with the vision as I told you. Then after that, His Grace will award these shields and trophies to the institutions, ABE institutions. I will call out their names later.
Dear Monsignor Jayanathan, the Secretary of ABE, Dear Father Rayappa, the Joint Secretary, Father Mahindran, the Principal and the Man, sorry, the Manager and Correspondent of this college, my dear teachers, my dear Principals, my dear Parents, and my dear 10th standard passed students. I am told there was more than 300 of you, who got more than 80%. This is good news. Let me first congratulate all of you, and also your Parents, your Teachers. Perhaps, I would like to say just three things. The first thing is, well begun is half done. You have begun well. Perhaps, 7th, 8th, 9th, and the 10th standard showed you what was your potential, that you are capable of doing, that you are success material, that you can achieve, that you can achieve. Like the sportsman who ends his race, like the cricketer who scores a century, like the gymnast who completes perhaps 9 or 10 out of 10. You have done something. Let's admit it, you are a success potential. So, well begun, and well begun is half done, we call it. Because there is still a long way to go. You have to finish your 12th standard of PUC. You have to do your graduation, and then perhaps you have to go for further, maybe post-graduation, and other things. Secondly, this is the time to, what we call, to widen your search, to widen your search, and to make the right choice, to make the right choice. So far, perhaps you are focused on your books, on your notes, on your tutians, on the board, things that were put on the board. But now, you will widen your search. You will go much beyond your books. You will go much beyond your classroom board. You, perhaps, you will even go beyond your, your Parents, your brother's family. You will go beyond your Teachers. You need to. Because now, you are going to a, a second phase of your life, where you will be doing pre-university or 12th standard. Therefore, you need to widen your search. And for this, there are certain, what we call, inbuilt devices. What is your interest? What is your interest? They say, "Go after your heart." Go after your heart. What does your heart say? Surely, your Parents would like you to become doctor, to become engineer, to become perhaps soft skill, I don't know what. But what does your heart say? What does your heart say? You know, I repeat the story of that small boy, who was in a village, and in front of him about 10, 15 kilometers away, he could see a hillock, he could see a big hillock. And every day when he got up in the morning, he used to see it. And his father, watching him, he knew that someday I am going to have some mischief from this fellow. He will try to go there. He will try to go there. And the father told him, "Nothing doing till you finish your 10th standard. Till you finish your 10th standard, don't attempt anything." Fortunately, he crossed the 10th standard, and the very day after the results, he started walking. The father knew, but he kept quiet, because you can't stop him. He will go to that hill. And so, as he walked and walked and walked, and we came closer to the hill itself, there was this old man who was sitting there. He was keeping a small shop or something. And he asked this boy, "Where are you going? Where do you want to go?" "No, uncle, I want to go to the top of the hill." And he looked at his size, his shape, and said, "Very difficult, son, it's not possible. It's not possible, because many have gone, there are thorns, there are bushes, there are snakes, they have come down. They have not even gone. 'No, I will go to the top,' he said. 'I will go to the top.'" And then, the old man had a little concern for him and asked him, "Son, why do you want to go there on the top?" He said, "Uncle, because my heart is there. My heart is there, and that is why I want to go." I would say, "Go after your heart. See what does your heart say? You want to write poetry, beautiful. You want to be a singer, beautiful. You want to be a sportsman, beautiful. Follow your heart." If Lata Mangeshkar, she went after science and maths and commerce, you would not have beautiful songs. If Sachin Tandulkar, he said, "I will do medicine and go to become a doctor," he would have remained as the village doctor. They followed their heart. And therefore, go after your heart as it were, even to convince your Parents to say that, "That is my interest. I will go after my heart." And widen your search, and also identify perhaps your future. 11th standard, 12th standard, is a good time to do this search. The third one, I say, the first one is, well begun is half done. Secondly, shorten your search, or rather widen your search. The third one is, sharpen your skills. Sharpen your skills. You are good at maths, okay? Go after the maths courses. You are good after computers, learn computers. You are good after music, strum some guitar, some cashew somewhere. You are good in sports, very nice, every day get up and start your exercises. Sharpen your skills. You don't know what you are and what you have. You see, there was this young man, who was quite educated, and his skill was in what's called marketing, marketing. He had the gift of the gab to tell the people that, eh, you can do something, and he could convince the people. But then, his parents said, "What a useless fellow. What can you do? What can you sell? What do you want to sell? There is no money in that. You have to become a scientist, you have to become a doctor." He said, "Nothing doing, I am going for marketing." And in the end, he couldn't get a job, but he got a job in a supermarket as one of the salesmen, the salesman. And the first day, he was standing, standing. He was put in charge of something like a fishing, you know, the, you have the fishing rods, you have the fishing hooks, and the fishing net and all that. So, that particular section, nobody came on the first day. And in the end, evening of the day, sir came down and said, "How much you collected?" "Nothing, sir, nobody came today here." And the second one said, "No, I made hundred dollars or hundred rupees. I sold this, I sold that, I am in the toothpaste section, I am in the clothes section, everybody." The second day came. This man was sitting there, and there is one fellow who came to buy a hook, a small fishing hook. And he said, he saw so many hooks, and he selected one hook. And then, this man, this boy started talking to him and said, "So, this hook needs a particular type of line that is there, do you have it?" He showed him his old, "Sir, this is an old, I am sorry to say that you can't catch fish with this line. I will give you another one." And he gave another one, a beautiful one, he tied it and keep. And then, he told him, "Sir, you know, for this string, you need this hook. It has to go like that." And thirdly, he sold that hook itself. The fourthly, he said, "Sir, in order to have this, you have need a vehicle that you can take. You can have the basket there, you can have the fist there, you can have the this there, you need all this." And that man was quite impressed, and he said, "Let me buy the whole thing." And then, he said, "In order to take this, you need a vehicle. You need a vehicle, you need a trawler, trailer type of vehicle." And then, he went the trailer, and then, he said everything. And so, in the evening, the proprietor came and asked, "How much did you?" He said, "$50,000." "$50,000, that's good talking, that's good marketing." This boy knew, and then, he all succeeded in that. Therefore, sharpen your skills. Find out what is your skill. Your skill maybe, for others, it maybe looks very stupid. Stupid, but then for you, it's the same. You know, I have seen small children doing crosswords, crosswords. I said, "They are gems." Because at that age, they can do crosswords. At the real age, what they would be able to do. So, my dear friends, I leave you at this. Number one, as I said, your goal is good, and therefore, you have to start your life as it were, in a very simple way, but at the same time, you have to be, start in a successful way. Shorten your search, focus your mind, and at the same time, sharpen your skills. I am very grateful to the ABE and all the staff who have taken the trouble, not only to identify you, but at the same time, to go beyond a small certificate that you are getting, to say that, "This is your start. This is your beginning." This morning, I spoke to the seniors, those who had finished their PUC, and also their graduation. I spoke to them about what's called the Pratibha Foundation in our Archdiocese, which we are starting and encouraging for the sake of what we call the civil services. You know what is civil services? You have the medical, you have the engineering, you have the computer, you have the mechanics, you can have the, what's called the different types of environmental. Civil services is serving the civil or the civic, the, the population, the people as such. And in the civil services, there are highest grades are, what's called IAS, IPS, IFS, Indian Foreign Service, IFS, Indian Forest Service, IRS, Indian Revenue Service, and this kind, there are the highest in, Indian Police Service, IPS. So, perhaps, if there are some of our children who would like to aim at that, now perhaps this you can start distantly. You can find out what perhaps I could do, what perhaps I can be this one. You know, last week, I read a small, eh, a girl who has passed IPS, IPS. Her father is a rickshaw puller, is from Bengal. He's a rickshaw puller, you know, the, in Bengal, they have rickshaws, not only that go by wheels, but there are ones which are pulled also. The people sit inside and they pull it. She was a rickshaw puller's girl, and today, she becomes IPS. And when the people interview her, he said, "I don't know. When I was, when I was going with dad for school in the, this one, I used to see that the policeman there, at the crossroads, used to stop, used to allow my father to go, my father used to salute them, and that's how I used to go to school. And then, I said, 'Why I can't become a policewoman like that person, like that lady? And today, I am a IPS, a police inspector.'" So, perhaps, we can also generate in us this desire to serve the society in this way. I said about the Pratibha Foundation, which is encouraging our Catholic students to become officers, the civil officers. For example, you know, at one time, some years back, perhaps your Parents will tell, "After 30, 40 years, we didn't have good colleges, see, you know, St. Joseph was not there, Mount Kamal was not there." But then, we had people in civil services. We could find out there were some Catholics who were IPS, who were IAS, who were tashildars, who were forest officers, who were defense. But today, we don't find. Because many of us, perhaps, we are focused ourselves, we have to go abroad, we have to do engineering, we have to do doctor, we have to do this. But then, someone of us also would say, "I want to become IAS officer. I want to become IPS officer." And for those that perhaps cannot afford the I, the Pratibha Foundation, we will try to help you and support you. We will try to help you and support you. Surely, if you can contribute a little, somewhat the better. If you cannot contribute, we will see that. And every year, we are aiming at least 10 to 15 students who will appear, or rather, train for IAS. In order to do that, there are specialist institutes are there in Bangalore itself, and we will try to sponsor you so that you can study well. Of course, it's not cake work. The classes of the institute start at 7 o'clock in the morning, finish 7:00 in the evening. It's 11-month intensive course after your graduation, after your graduation. Therefore, you can start itself now. I am happy to say there are 10 students from Karnataka Christians who are now doing the, the civil service coaching. There are 10 of them. We met them recently, we called them for a dinner, and to see that, it was very consoling for us, to say that, all 10 of them come from poor families, come from middle-class families. But there is fire in them. I will become. Seven of them are girls. I will become. Out of the seven girls, there is one specially abled girl also. She cannot walk, she has to go with the sticks as it were, but then, there is fire in her heart. I will become an IAS officer, and we are encouraging her. So, therefore, my dear students, if distantly you have this in mind, you can also generate as it were, the resources in a small way, but more with the fire in your heart. As I said, follow your heart. See where your heart is, go after it, and surely, you will find success. I thank your Teachers in a very special way. Monsignor told us that we will be honoring some of them, because they are also doing a great job for us. I also congratulate your Parents, because sleepless nights, not only for you, but for your Parents, they have seen to you that you have reached this stage in your life. Go along, go, go to that mountain top, because your heart is there, and don't give up. I wish you well, thank you.
Thank you, Your Grace, for your valuable and uplifting words.
We now call upon the students of St. Aloshia's Degree College, Quail, for a thanksgiving song.
Check, check. Check, check.
I come before you today. And there is just one thing that I want to say. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. For all you've given to me. For all the blessings that I cannot see. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. With a grateful heart, with a song of praise. With an austere song, I would bless your name. Thank you, Lord. I just wanna thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. I just wanna thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord.
Thank you, college choir. I request Monsignor to come on stage.
My dear friends, it will be very short in proposing the vote of thanks. At the outset, as they said, "Thank you, God, for everything. We thank the triune God for his commendable or his grace shivered upon us to candidate the morning as well as the afternoon program well organized. So we thank the Lord." Then we also, we are grateful to Abhilad Raj Bishop, Most Reverend, Dr. Peter Machado, who is the president of the ABE. Morning he was with us and afternoon as well. Your grace, we are very grateful to you for your presence and above all, for the inspirational motivational talks. I like the incidents that interspersed during his speech. Even if you forget the other concepts, the stories themselves communicate to us. Thank you very much. Let us give him a very round of applause. And two auxiliary bishops, bishops Satish and Bishop Zenadin, they also gave a good kind of reflection message, thought-provoking message and also they awarded. I thank them also on behalf of all of us. So thank the bishops. Next, my dear friends, I'll be failing in my duty if I don't thank Ravan Father, Anthony Mahindran and the principal, Sandhya Panikar, Mr. Jan C. and a few others of this institution. And also the MCs, the dancers this morning and also those who worked behind the scene and your staff, the volunteers, the students, catering. And very specially, I thank the ACC and AWI team for having did the live coverage morning as well as evening. I thank Ravan Father Mary Anthony and all the staff of the ACC. And here we let them give a big round of applause. My dear children, dear parents, as we announced, on Tuesday, we are going to upload the pictures. Don't take the trouble. We send you the link and all the pictures as well as the video. We are going to upload it, then you can download, take you want, take the printouts. Thank you. And also thank very Ravan Father, we know, dynamic joint secretary of the ABE, Ravan Father Raiyappa. He did a good job and assisted us to candidate. So thank you very much, Father, for your cooperation and your assistance. And my AB staff, they worked couple of weeks, you know, well organized and planned. So my dear staff, I am proud of you and I thank you very much for your assistance and for your help. And also the mandatory students in the morning as well as in the evening. And dear parents, you are actually behind, not behind the achievements of the, because that's why they say, "Matru Deva Bhava, Pitru Deva Bhava, Acharya Deva Bhava." Before Acharya, we consider Acharya Deva Bhava is Matru Deva Bhava, Pitru Deva Bhava. Thank you very much. Let us give them big round of applause. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Now, my dear friends, now we are going to honor before Archbishop Bisothe trophy. Your grace, we request you to, as a mark of our gratitude, like to shawl and honor Ravan Father. Please come, Anthony Mahindran, the manager correspondent and also the principal. Mr. Sandhya, please come. My dear friends, from this year onwards, we are giving shield to the institution that gets 10% results, acquires 10% result either in 10th or ICSC. I'm very happy to tell you, this year, three of our ICC schools secured 10% in the examination, final examination of 2024-25. So we invite Father Michael Prakash to come. And he's from, he is the manager correspondent of Saint Anthony's Public School, T.C. Palia. Then Christa King Public School, I think the principal is here or anybody from Christa King Public School.
If the teachers have come from that particular school, they can come forward as well. Be ready. Christa King Public School Management and also Next and Germans and also from Chikakamanali.
She's representing Christa King Public School. This morning, Father Divya Paul was there. He had a meeting to excuse himself on behalf of Christa Public School. The principal is here and she will receive the award. My dear friends, one more ICC, Ravan Father Raiyappa. And invite Ravan Father Raiyappa to receive the shield because 10% result. Then after that, let him not leave the stage, because he has to receive the rolling trophy there. So this year, I see among the IC schools, Saint Germain High School will get the rolling trophy.
Where's the staff also to come?
Now, Ravan Father Emmanuel is here, your grace, one more prize. We, among the state board, one school got 10% result, that is rural school. Very proud of Ravan Father Emmanuel and his team and also the students. They acquired 10% result. So I may request his grace to honor Father and also the trophy will be given. My dear friends, please stand. Your grace, you know, will give your blessing. The final prayer is grace will say a short prayer. Then afterwards, he will bless all of us.
Heavenly Father, bless and thank you for this day. But thank you for the good news of the success of these our students from our different schools who have achieved eighty percent and more in the morning session and also now. Bless them, give them a good future. May your beginnings start from today, determined as they are to walk the way and at the same time to climb the hill. Now difficult, but at the same time, not impossible. May the word impossible be never written in your destiny and at the same time, believe in God, believe in your elders, superiors and believe in themselves. Bless all the students who are here, their parents, the teachers and the schools that have done well this year. Bless in a very special way, our ABE, the Society of Education at the same time, all those who are helping and supporting us. Keep us always united in your love and in your service. We make our prayer to Christ our Lord. The Lord be with you. May Almighty God bless you, the Father, the Son and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Dear friends, it is our duty to respect the land and the country where we live. As a sign of our respect, now let us conclude this program by singing the national anthem together. Jana Garna Mana. Thank you, your grace. Thank you, Monsignor. Thank you once again. I request kindly be patient as you exit the hall. So do not rush yourselves. Kindly take your time to walk out.
Thank you, you please.
I request all the volunteers, the student volunteers to remain back in the hall and also all the staff, those who helped us to remain in the hall. Especially Saint Alashia's Degree, PU and the high school staff.